Okay, it's 5:02 on Monday, November the first, and we want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting today. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you'll all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Agenda item number four, entertain a motion and to approve today's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I want to thank Brandon Harris today for being our videographer. And I also want to extend a thank you to Harley for running the meeting two weeks ago so Julie and I could enjoy a little vacation. So, thank you very much. I don't know, last night was trick or treat night, and I don't know about anyone else, but we had about 250 little costumes come to our door last night. So, it was a lot of fun to see the costumes and the proud parents as well that brought them. So, that's always good. That was down a little bit. Years past, we've had closer to 300, but 250 last night. And the other thing is just tomorrow is election day. So, just a reminder, everyone, to be sure that you vote. Everyone votes, in Algon, everyone votes, I believe, at the Columbia Event Center between 7 o'clock tomorrow morning and 8 o'clock tomorrow night. So, there are a few contested races, but it's still important to have your voice heard and vote. Julie and I have traveled to countries where voting is illegal and/or dangerous. So, it's very important to exercise our right to vote. So, any council have anything they'd like to share? Okay, hearing none, we'll move then to agenda item number six is an update from the city administrator.
All right, a few different items to share tonight. To start out, I'd like to invite our newest city employee up to introduce herself. I'm sure many folks already know her, Joanne Roke Bode, started today for us a whole time as our new communication manager. So, just an opportunity to introduce her to the council and the public.
Hello, and once great to see all of you in this new role. Hopefully, still, I will be a familiar face to many of you. I came to the city from Cassuth Regional Health Center as their public information person, public relations manager. Some of you may also know me from Farmers Market, been a vendor there for many years. So, I'm kind of looking forward to carving out this role. It's the first time the city has hired someone in this role. So, I think time will tell exactly what it involves, right, Jacob? So, we're anticipating a lot of it will be sharing that information through the website, through our local media sources, through social media. But I'm also hoping that you will tell me, as the city council and the general public, what do you need to know that you feel like you aren't getting to know? And how can we help you get your hands on that information and understand what's happening in the city? So, excited to get going. Today's my first official day, but I've been helping out a little bit the last two weeks. So, thanks to all the city staff who've gotten me adjusted and feeling comfortable and look forward to what's next. Any questions for me before I sit down?
No, I just appreciated the idea that the day after Halloween, you're carving out your position. So, I thought that was pretty clever.
Thank you for saying that. Yes, appreciate that. Any other funny way you can comment?
No, but welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah. Happy to have you.
One of the first items Joanne helped us with, as she mentioned, she's a servant this part-time over the last two weeks. But as part of our input on our parks and recreation planning, last Thursday, we had a public input meeting on redevelopment of Central Park. We had some good, really good turnout there. But with that, we're also following up here this week and next with an online survey that folks can take to tell us what type of amenities or what ideas they have to redevelop that park. So, this is posted, it's an online survey. It's posted on our city Facebook page as well as our city website. And then we also have paper copies here in City Hall if anyone would like to stop in to pick them up to give us ideas on redevelopment of that park. Also, there will be a meeting coming up on Monday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. regarding downtown snow removal here at City Hall. A letter's been sent to downtown only regarding that, but we're going to go over the city's new ordinance of parking on Side A and Side D during snow emergencies to help with the snow removal process. That's Monday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And then also, I wanted to share that the city, we applied a couple of months ago and found out last week that we were selected as a community visioning city for next year through the Trees Forever program. So, we've got a kickoff meeting with some of the steering committee members tomorrow night via Zoom. And then another meeting here later this month, but we look at that process to actually formally kick off with starting to engage the public in January. And that will be then a 11-month planning process, working with Trees Forever staff as well as some landscape architects on design and ways we could improve the city. And some of our transportation amenities, as well as some of our corridors and parks and things like that. So, we're very excited to participate in that program. The city last participated in that in 2006, and some good projects came out of it. So, we're excited to work with Trees Forever and engage with the public over the next year to help decide how we develop and plan ongoing for years to come. And then just a final item is just an update on a few street projects and where we're at. On the Mill and Overlay projects, those are more or less complete. The only items that remain are a few minor punctuals items on a few concrete repairs and some valley gutters. And then for the streets that were on the west half of the project, the seeding in the right-of-way, that will take place here on Minder Vender with dormant winter seed bex. On Moore Street, the south block has opened. The only thing that remains on the north is joint crack ceiling and then striping the line. So, hopefully, that'll get open here yet later this week.
Jacob, I talked to Jen, I think, about it today. There'll be crack ceiling tomorrow. They're going to open Moore Street at probably Wednesday, leave the parking block up because they won't get striped until next week when it's a little bit warmer.
Good.
And then Snap-on Drive, work continues on that. And then the paving for that should be done here later this week or next.
Wow, good. Okay, thank you very much. Move to agenda item number seven. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on tonight's agenda. I don't see anyone here in City Hall. Oh, Lori, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Hi, everyone. I am bringing more good news. I don't know if you have heard or not, but the library plans, I'm moving from the temporary location on November 9th. And we are so very excited today. We started putting some of our stored books on the shelf. And I'd like to recognize several groups who have helped us. First of all, Troop 71 Boy Scouts and their parents did a great job. They were fantastic. And they moved us to that temporary location. We also had help from our city employees. And now, I'm so very excited that Urquhart County Boy Accounting has volunteered. And at this time, they say they have 24 people signed up who will help us on the 9th. And so, things are looking really good with the renovation. We're excited. And we want to encourage everyone to pick up some extra books because we will be closed for a few days. At this point, we're uncertain. It may be most of the month of November, but if things continue to go very well, we'll open as soon as we can. Do you have any questions for us? Thank you.
Just to clarify, the intent is to close on the 9th and then remain closed throughout the move until later in the month?
Correct. So, you have until the 8th to pick up as many books as you'd like for the month of November, and then we'll see how it goes at that point.
Great, thank you, Lori.
Can we put that on Facebook or something, social media?
It's already on the speaker's side.
Do we like that or what? Okay, anyone else here? Casey and Dunn, is there anyone on the phone?
There is one person on there, but there's not me anymore.
Okay, all right. So, we'll move into agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our last council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve. We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move into new business, agenda item number nine. This is the second reading of an ordinance dealing with sanitary sewer service charges.
This ordinance establishes a new sanitary sewer infrastructure fee. The fee is based on the size of the water meter, starting at $4 for 5/8ths and 3/4ths inch, and working the way up based on water meter service size. For approximately 92% to 93% of users, we'll see, we'll fall in that $4 category. But this will be step one of what will need to be a series of increases between now, 2024 and 2026, when we begin major upgrades to our wastewater treatment facility.
Motion to waive the second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody to waive the second reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And we need a motion to approve the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. A motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody to approve the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. We'll move to agenda item number 10. This is a resolution involving Snap-on Tools.
The city and Snap-on Tools have had a sewer rental agreement, which is basically an agreement on the amount of type of discharge Snap-on that will into the sanitary sewer system. Our previous three-year agreement had expired, and so this agreement is for two years. It more or less is the same as the previous agreement with the only minor changes being a reduction in the number of organic materials, BODs allowed into the system on phosphorus, which is one of the items that is going to be big in our upcoming wastewater plant upgrade. That went from just a monitoring stage to we now have limits set that will monitor. And then we also have language in there about sewer fee calculations to include an infrastructure fee if the city adopts one, which we're obviously in the process of doing. So, this was negotiated between the representatives from Snap-on as well as Mark Lemps, our wastewater superintendent, and then Kevin Graves, our wastewater engineer. So, recommended approval for the sewer rental agreement with Snap-on.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Don?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 11, this is a resolution approving our annual TIF report.
The annual overrevenue tax increment finding or TIF report. So, you're required to submit this report annually to the state. Essentially, what it does is summarize what payments or uses of funds the city in the past fiscal year made utilizing TIF. This past year, the city used a total of $260,112 TIF funds that went towards city debt payments on the key industrial park purchase, and then as well as rebate agreements that the city's committed to through development agreements with white transfer and OBL apartments. So, this resolution just approves the report for the funds that have already been paid out.
I'll make a motion to approve the report.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, a second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 12, this is a resolution approving a settlement agreement.
This is a settlement agreement with New Way K&amp;H Co-op doing business as a classic, upcoming classic staff for a second violation within two years of a failed tobacco check.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney.
Did we hear the first one, sorry.
Oh, you two did it at the same time.
Perfect, you choose.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 13 is a resolution pertaining to a mortgage.
Michaela Anderson had a down payment of Republic Loan Fund with the city. That loan has been paid in full. This resolution operates as the mayor clerk to release the mortgage on that property since the loan was paid.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Thank you, Michaela, for that loan payment. Agenda item number 14, this is a pay application pertaining to Teets Park Shelter House.
This is pay application number four in the amount of $28,297.22 for work just on general site conditions and then the wood framing that has gone with the roof as construction's underway. Architect has reviewed and recommends payment.
Have you heard about the roof on that? Do we know where that's going on? Do we have materials?
Materials should be arriving this week.
Okay.
Move to approve the pay application.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15 is a request to refer to Planning and Zoning Commission.
I think you have an updated agenda here.
Oh, sorry.
Change order to Snap-on Drive.
Oh, whoops.
So, agenda number 15 is a change order for Snap-on Drive.
Oh, okay.
As we recall, Matt Cole, project engineer, couldn't be here this evening, but as he mentioned at the last meeting, on our GIS, it showed an existing stormwater pipe on the east side of Snap-on Drive that we were going to connect into. Once they got in the field, we found that, we don't know why, but a pipe was marked there that wasn't there. So, this change order basically adds that pipe into the project so we can complete the stormwater. It is an increase of $17,200, which when the project engineers, when we were going through this and all parking numbers, they thought it'd be around $20,000. So, we think that number is very fair to construct that storm sewer infrastructure that we thought was there but isn't. So, this approves change order to that project.
Motion to approve change order.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Hi, Nick.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. So, the referral to planning zoning then is agenda item number 16? Okay, very good. We'll move to that then.
The city received a question from the owners at 500 Norwood Drive to have their property rezoned from Highway Service Business District to Light Manufacturing. In light of that proposed change, the city recommends that the two properties to the east also be rezoned to Light Manufacturing. So, the map here, you can see the three properties outlined in blue that were to be proposed for rezoning. So, this item simply refers to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation.
So, could you just briefly outline what the difference in those two, what the step is being taken or requested?
For Highway Service Business District doesn't allow any type of manufacturing within it. It's mainly, you know, here at sales. There is a, the owner of 500 Norwood Drive has an offer of a property. That business, as we understand it, would involve some light manufacturing elements that would take place within the building, which wouldn't be allowed under, it just be zoning district. So, that would, what prompted the change? And kind of on that note, because it's, I believe it's the purchase agreement with a contingent upon property being rezoned, it's kind of a time-sensitive one. So, we've already got the Planning and Zoning Commission scheduled. So, if this is, you know, referred tonight, they can meet and consider that, and then it can come back to council on the 15th. So, the big change is basically just to allow manufacturing, which when we looked at the land use plan for the city, you know, a slight manufacturing just to the east of there, the other two properties, you know, are used for storage of, you know, manufactured concrete septic systems. So, we think it makes sense to have all three of these rezoned and far enough off, you know, the highway, therefore, we considered highway service.
Okay, move to refer to P and Z.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Abstain from the vote.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 17, then this is to set a public hearing for a proposed rezoning of Norwood Drive properties.
So, this action sets a public hearing from the city council, proposed for November 15th at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers to hear comments on the proposed rezon, the three properties that were just referred to P and Z. Planning and zoning commission is, meetings are already been set, and they are scheduled to meet on November 11th to consider these requests. We report back to council by the 15th.
Motion to set the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Motion carried. We'll move to agenda item number 18, and this is an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This would be to fill the remainder of Tony Ram's term, which expires January 1st of 2024. Do we have a name yet?
I don't know.
Okay. We'll move that then for the next meeting. Agenda item number 19, then this is the second notification of terms expiring and future appointment of two housing commission members. This is Morgan Keeker and Kathy Nelson. Their terms expire the 1st of January of next year, 2022. This is notification only, the second notification. So, agenda item number 20 then is strictly a discussion item for the American Rescue Plan Act. And I think Chief Bo Miller and Nettie Renshaw would like to present.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. Going to give you a little bit of the background. October of 2019, I retired from a 21-year career at Fort Dodge Correction Facility. Started there in June of 98, two months after it opened. We had 400 staff people and 50 offenders. And when I retired, we had 1,250 offenders and maybe a little over 200 staff members. But I started out as a counselor. Then I was a unit manager, which meant I was in charge of 250 offenders and full staff. And the last eight years of my career, I was the associate warden of treatment, which meant I supervised the counselors, the psychologists, health services, classification, parole, just about everything. What I learned in that 21 years is that the Department of Corrections is the largest provider of mental health services in the state, and they're not funded. And Department of Corrections is always the caboose of the train. So, we're trying to deal with things way after they happen. So, when I retired, I decided that I needed to find some way to kind of intervene so we can start building people up. My time in prison wasn't my first exposure to mental health. My mother was, I'm from Storm Lake, born and raised in Storm Lake. My mother was an identical twin, so identical that when one of them had a date and didn't want to go, the young man would come and pick her up, and the sister would go, and they never knew the difference. Beautiful young women, smart, intelligent, never apart though, because in those days, you know, twins were twins, so they had their own little world. It was probably about 1950, my aunt was married, her husband was from Johnstown, Pennsylvania, and they moved back there. And at that time, both my mother and my aunt developed schizophrenia. So, about 1950, 1951, both of them disintegrated into a lot of chaos. In 1957, my mother had a lobotomy because the doctor from Georgetown University was going through the United States to teach doctors to do a lobotomy so people could go home pure out of the facilities. I don't have to say, that wasn't pure. My mother lived in my home for probably about four years of my life. That was in 1950. As a nation, we have not moved forward to help people with mental illness. We're still on the caboose end of the train. Right now, the people who are on the first line with that are law enforcement people. There aren't enough resources in the community. When they closed the four mental institutions in Iowa, funding was to go to communities so communities would have resources. That never happened. So, you have more people who don't have a chance to be stabilized and helped in life, and they slide to the corners. And it's law enforcement now who are dealing with them. We don't have time, energy, resources to help people. Sheriff can take them to Lincoln, Nebraska. They find a bed in the hospital for 48 hours. Those people come back, they're not any better than what they went 48 hours before. We don't have the ability to stabilize and help people. So, I was lucky enough upon retirement to connect with Katie Pullman and Jenna Shipler, who had been volunteers for the police force. And they were helping people along these lines as much as they could. They were helping law enforcement. But it's outgrown what volunteers can do. So, we started putting a plan together of the idea of having a person who would be embedded with the law enforcement, a police department, the sheriff's department, who would be a guide, a navigator, a person who could help law enforcement de-escalate, support, look for treatment, what level of treatment do you need, also be on the other end to help them build stability, what do you need in the community. We need ways to get the people in the community knowing what resources are there, but also to check on them to continue to build them, because it doesn't help. help. You know, by the time the police officers and the sheriff department has responded nine or ten times to somebody, they get frustrated, they're going to arrest them. And I can tell you, they go into the criminal justice system. We're not doing any favor because now you've added a burden, and that burden is money to them. When we had people go out of prison, they didn't want to leave prison because they got great mental health care, but you know, twelve hundred and fifty people, that's a little community. There was support there. Now the transition into the community, especially in rural counties, they've got to go fifty miles, a hundred miles. They don't have, they don't have car, they don't have, they don't have a way to get there. And people start to disintegrate. So we started to look at this position. I think you have a copy of the proposal. This is just completely kind of naive about how to do this. What we are asking for is two years, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But this is a split position between the county and the city, would serve the whole county, it would serve the whole city. But we really don't know what that is. We don't know if it's fifty, fifty, or whatever. But one advantage of this position also is that whoever would be hired, they would do data tracking to know where the, where the time's being spent. You know, by the end of two years, they would know, how long is the officer at the hospital with this person? How many times has this person come in and we're not helping them? We would have that information to continue to build on this. It's a problem that happens, it's happening today as we're speaking in this community. And people are thin on resources, and we don't know to help people until it's a crisis. Not a good time to help people. We need to start to back up and help people grow and thrive and become part of the community. Mental health has been stigmatized all my life, you know, all everybody's life. The irony is, all of us have a brain, and it's part of the body. But we've managed with insurance to cut this off. Plus your teeth, you have to have a separate policy for teeth. But it's very hard to give support and money to have that kind of treatment. It isn't unusual for people to stop taking their medication. They're going to self-medicate. So now they have a dual problem with substance abuse, drug abuse, and not being able to stabilize their condition. So this is kind of jumping in with both feet. Don't have the whole picture, but have a whole picture, an immense problem that needs to be served, not only in our county, but throughout the state and throughout the nation. We cannot commit, we can't continue to criminalize mental health. And there are people who have mental health problems that never go through the criminal justice system, but they're not always being served. I mean, it's very fatiguing on families. I mean, my mother, my first memory is four years old, and I knew my mother was going to be going someplace. If she was in the bathroom more than three days, sitting on the register smoking cigarettes. Then when we would go visit her at Cherokee, I was about thigh high. First thing I saw were her fingernails. If they were manicured, she's well. If they weren't, if they were nicotine stained, she's going to be there for a while. But there was nobody coming into the family to say, this is what's going on, this is what needs to happen. It was go there and then come back. So many people do need help right in our community, and it's only going to be cost city measures because we're paying officers a lot for transport, a lot to watch people. That is just, you know, we're just floating on the surface because nothing's getting done, nothing's getting done in order to help those people. So I think we'll have something we can.
I was just, a couple of things, I'll kind of go over what she did, but I just kind of want to walk you through what a mental health call looks like for us, just to, just to kind of help explain it. We, and again, there's so many different levels, but we get our, you know, we might get that first call, person, let's, I'll just use suicidal. Person's suicidal, you get there. We have some basic things we have to look at. One, are they suicidal? What, what are they saying they're going to do? Like, you know, they might say, well, yeah, I'm thinking about suicide. So we have to say, okay, are you, you looking at, you know, trying to use a knife, use a weapon? You know, we have to try and break through what are their means of it. So it gets, we're down at the scene or their house for sometimes hour, two hours, trying to work that out. Again, they're in a crisis. We're trying to get data for us to decide what, what do we do at the next step? Once we get that, if we find out, yes, we believe this is somebody that is suicidal. And now, we don't have the means to, the reality is, we don't have the means to help. So we then have them come with us. We go out to the hospital. At that point, sometimes you got to think, sometimes these people are mad at other family members. So there's fighting going on. So, you know, maybe they haven't officially got aggressive with them yet, but we have at least one, two, sometimes three officers down there for a couple hours. Now, we all have to go. We'll all now move to the hospital because sometimes they're still not, not, you know, nothing's changed on how they're acting. So we get out there, there's at least one or two nurses we're helping. Then the doctor comes in and they start their process, going through this. Well, when that's all done, the doctor then says, yes, I believe you're, you know, you are suicidal, and we need to get you a medical bed. Or, no, you're not. Then they are just released and gone. But I'm going to go forward with the doctor says, yes, you, at this point, you need, you know, you need to go. So at this point, we are still there. All the law enforcement's there, and then let's say, completely calm down and change everything, maybe we can release a couple people. You know, so then there's only one, and we try and take shifts just because this is when the process can start really taking a long time. One, we now have to wait for court order paperwork. So if it's at night, by the time everything gets taken care of with the judge signing it, sometimes you're looking at two, three, four hours. But at the same time, until them court order papers are signed, we also cannot find a bed yet. Because now we're, now they're just, okay, now we know they have to go somewhere. Well, at this point, if the sheriff's office has help, they start as well. Now, they're coming out because they have to transport. And there are times we have sat at Cassuth Regional for twenty-four, thirty-six hours, moving, you know, just switching people out because we just, the beds aren't available in the state. And we do finally find this bed, that person, and she brought up like one time, they finally found a bed in Lincoln, Nebraska, driving to Lincoln, Nebraska. Two days later, that person gets released. Forty-eight hour hold. They're actually, not actually getting the help, it's just getting them into a safe, safe environment. When they're released, they have to find their own way home, which they're going to. They come home, nothing has changed, except for, they're still in a crisis that maybe was up here, but now, maybe they took their meds, they're back at, you know, they're, they're back at where the rest of us would say is a normal level. Doesn't mean in another day or two, we're not dealing with them again. And it happens, and we deal with the same people. And then, you know, and it might be a different level this next time. It might be a little better, but it still hasn't changed the overall of, the process still happens the same. Sometimes they might get sent home, sometimes. And so part of what we're wanting in this position is, first of all, that first time suicidal, suicidal or when they're in their level of distress, and we go out to the hospital, that doesn't change the fact that we're still going to be there that, you know. But our goal is, if we can get this position filled, that person can come out there and now start talking with them, and then build that rapport with that person. Once that is done, they're still going to have to go to their forty-eight hour hold. But then maybe when they get back, that communication can stay there and maybe talk to them, hey, you know, we had talked about, you were going to try and set up an appointment here. Have you done that? You know, people, they get kind of forgot about, and then, again, I don't know what's going on in their head. Neither do they, they kind of just go back to their normal or what they believe is normal, and nothing's changed. We want to be a part of fixing that because we believe if we can have make people or have someone making them phone calls, helping get them in the right direction, making sure that if they were supposed to set up a doctor appointment, they made that doctor appointment. If they were supposed to do that, they're doing it. And then it's behind, they're still going to have, maybe if they're having maybe some bad thoughts, that person could be, you know, they, they can call that person, hey, man, I'm having a bad day. They can talk to them, what, what resources can we do to help you? Because on our side as law enforcement, a lot of times, I mean, we care, we absolutely care, but we also might be waiting to do another investigation, and waiting on that next call might be waiting that we're like, okay, we, once we leave that call, like, we're done with the call. You know, we're, we're not, all right, let's call next week and see if they made it out. It just, that's not where the law enforcement side is. And we're trying to, I mean, this is a pilot program. Like, what we're looking at is new, you know, what we've done, what's, it's been working, we've seen, you know, so there's little things that we might be tweaking as if, if we can make this work, we might have to change a few things here and there. But she talked about the caboose, we want to be upfront. We want to, we want to try and do what we can to see that. And, you know, a couple of years, you know, this could show, start seeing like, hey, boy, we're not spending any of the time at a hospital. You know, and just to, you know, to get them contacts and to see, and just see what we can do on our end to, to help, you know, to help on the mental health side. Because it's, I mean, it's only getting worse. I mean, it's getting worse every day. We have, I mean, it's just call after call. And that's why we're obviously coming to you guys reference part of it, and it's also going to the board of supervisors as well on their end to try and make this a split position. We're hoping, kind of looking at it because we've already had like the, you know, we already had a, an outline of what we've been doing, and we had Katie Pullman, Jenna Shipler helping. You know, we're looking at like, trying, we would be the ones in charge of it because we've already had the, you know, the stuff set up. And, but it would also operate under the, the sheriff's office would be able to utilize this position as well and just kind of work through. I know what we're already working on, it's getting some pretty good notice, because, and I might let you just talk, you know, there's a gentleman down at college that he's, we already have a meeting set up in November.
Yeah, when we started this, I really didn't know that the city was granted ARPA funds, but we started this last spring. I don't know when it was. So that's kind of when we sent it through the county. But I didn't know where to look for the funds, so I still teach at Iowa Central criminal, criminal justice classes. And Jim Kirsten is there, and he's the vice president, and he's also been in the, he's a representative in the past, but he has some, you know, connections. But he knew where to get them, so he sent me the information. So I was able, able to go on the site, and he asked what I was doing. And right away, he called me in to talk to him. And I explained what we were doing. And he said, I've never had anybody explain it with that much common sense, and it'd be your county's having problems, every county in Iowa's having problems. So he's invited Webster County representatives, the sheriff here, the police, the police, anybody here that wants to, November twenty-third, a representative, and we're going to look at what kind of funding might be at the state level also. You know, there, if you go to Burlington, if you go to Marshalltown, you go to Cedar Rapids, they have a great system. But there are resources across the street too. So their resources are long and deep. We don't have that. So we thought it'd be creative in how we do that. You know, we want to take care of the people who live in Cassuth County. We want them to have good lives. We want them to be able to grow to the best of their ability and not be set apart. There's no, there's no reason for that. And these, you know, this, this is a position that isn't a duplication of services. It will be a guy who can help all the services we have. Ira Lee Ball comes up now for crisis. Jenna Shipler is a volunteer for that. So she responds to though we have crisis through, our resources through Care Connection in Spencer. But those are all the resources. That's how we can get you connected with this. And, you know, when people come off of a crisis, they're kind of relieved, you know, I'm done with that. And sometimes aren't motivated to continue to keep looking for what they need. And they need help till they can get that stronger.
So are you on the agenda tomorrow morning for the board supervisors? No?
No, actually, I went, there's an ARPA committee for the county.
Okay.
And I'm on that committee, but I had submitted this, but they wanted to look at it a little further. And then they asked a question about the city's involvement, and that's where I'm naive as we wrote this up. We have to kind of edit it a little bit to be a little more clear about what we would ask, you know, the city or the county to do. So you need to do that. But, you know, we just wanted to make it clear that it was a joint venture, but the reason we went from the city angle is because that volunteer program had grown up there, and the city had used it for some extent. So I was just looking for a way to get my foot in the door. So, you know, we will have to just kind of amend some things.
I was trying to think just how this would work. Would still the law enforcement do the same as in the scenario you gave us, that they'd go talk to the person, the person might end up in a hospital?
Yeah, so.
And it's after that that you would involve?
The way like, I mean, if I get down to, like, obviously, I get that call, and I head down there. If we have that person, as long as, once I get in there, start talking to the person, we know we have a safe environment, I would make that, I'd be, I'd make that phone call now. Let's bring whoever that person is, bring them in here. Let's get them embedded in right away, make that connection, let them start using that to see what we can do. Doesn't change if we're transporting a hospital, absolutely, that person's going to ride with us. We'll go out there, the same person could come with us there. And then just to really build that rapport right then, right away in that crisis, when they come out of that, and when the reality is, they go back, you know, back home, probably forty-eight to, you know, fifty-some hours later, maybe that's, you know, say it's on a Friday night, maybe that Monday, now this person's going to just reach out to them, hey, I know, I heard you're home now. How you doing? You know, what's your next step? What are we doing? You know, to work with them that way, let's, let's continue that process, help get them into the guidance of where, you know, what their next step is. Make sure there are maybe an open resource to call, you know, maybe in another two weeks, she, there's not, that person, he or she, whoever, calls and says, I'm not doing very good. All right, hey, let's see if I can get you, you know, to talk to someone. Maybe it changes now this next time, instead of it's a law enforcement, maybe it's this, a phone call's made and the resources get moved and says, hey, this is what's going on. And, you know, and now we're not taking one, two, three of us going to the hospital. We, you know, maybe we can start, you know, getting it, I guess, de-escalating and working it on that angle, and getting them the help they need opposed to, we got them out of here, and now it's not our problem.
To keep the BS.
Because they're still coming back to, and it's still, I mean, I don't ever want to call it a problem, but they're coming back and we have to, we're addressing it again. And nothing had changed from the first time. We're just, we're, it's just a cycle that's going over, and we're trying to break the cycle. And let's, let's hopefully do what we can to improve people's lives.
So I take it this person probably have to be on call because just on a case that say this happens?
There's a lot of things that would be looked at, but it would probably have to, and that could be, I mean, when, if it happened, we'd have to say, it might be like thirty hours of in-house and ten hours of on-call, you know. And that might change. The next, maybe this week, you're, you had to spend fifteen to twenty hours overnights helping. Maybe the next week, it's a little less in-house. You know, everything on there would have to be, it'd have to be, you know, twisted, because we don't, we can't say this is exactly how this is going to happen.
What kind of qualifications or training and that kind of stuff would a person need for that position? Kind of an idea on that?
Well, that's all the truth.
Yeah. Well, it, it could be a person who had had extensive experience as a peer counselor also, you know, that had worked with people on some level before. We may get at. We may get applicants who have a bachelor's degree in social work or in some kind of experience. So we would have to just, uh, kind of measure that out. Uh, so they may have ten years' experience already working in the community. Um, you know, they may, uh, have, uh, less experience, but they may have an education also. Uh, what we're looking at is people who, um, have an understanding of how to develop a rapport, so their listening skills have to be good. They're gonna have to be flexible and they're, they're the bridge between mental health and criminal justice. So, um, you know, that's the next thing that we're gonna work on in terms is the, um, job application and what they would need. So, you know, we're not gonna get a PhD to come here in this community. You know, if we did, we get twenty psychiatrists coming here, we wouldn't be talking to you, so, um.
Then I was just kind of wondering, do, with the plan, uh, to report to Bo or who would be?
That, that's how we had originally talked about it, it would be, they would report in. I mean, like, we, right now, we already have a desk for when, uh, Katie Coleman and Jenna Shipper are there, we have a desk for them. They have stuff set up when we u, when we utilize them and they come in. We, we set that up on that volunteer side, but Katie's now moved, uh, and Jenna, I, I did work another job and it's a little tougher, but we want to keep this and we're just, the volunteer is just tough on that end to have that and expect, you know, the results we want, you know, to do what we want it done right. And we wanna be able to, you know, especially if we can get like two years, gives us that, you know, a year and a half to really look and then we, at that point can see, how do we make this something where like this, we have to have it. You know, this is something we gotta continue, uh, forward. And hopefully by that time, we can also look at making it part of the budget and, and moving forward that way.
With this person being on call every week, wouldn't it be better if we had two part timers? That way, yeah, if you had to be on call some of these weeks, fifty-two weeks a year, you, you're not gonna have what?
I, I think we're pretty premature at these talking details.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that is, that is, I mean, and there's, yeah, there's thought, but yeah, of having a full time and maybe you could get a volunteer, part-time somebody to help a little bit there to make sure there is a break, but yeah, that's, I mean, yeah.
But that has been discussed, you know, in terms of creating this, so, um, it's something that we can look at also.
And hopefully like the other cities already have something established, like Marshalltown, you said?
Marshalltown does.
You know, maybe they have something for you to help collect that data too, cause I'm, I'm sure that's gonna be important.
Yeah, and I've talked with people at Care Connection also, and so they have a way to collect that data. Um, you know, Marshalltown, uh, their police department went to their YSS services, which is their social services. So they have those services established, so, you know, they're rich, they just really had to connect that way. Um, but yeah, there are, um, other, and I've talked to Cedar Rapids also, so I can reach out to them. And they probably would be willing to share some of the mechanics of, uh, gaining that information. Cause that's an important part of this also, because we really have to know where the time is spent and what the need is.
There's a lot of your, your larger communities and metros that have implemented these types of programs and, um, you know, have shown that, you know, there's a cost benefit in terms of time, resources, you know, both on the PD as well as the EMS side, you know, of reduction of calls as well as just, you know, the impact that you have on someone who's struggling on, on helping them improve their life. Uh, so, you know, I think it would be really important, you know, a two-year commitment, the idea being that, you know, that would help us recruit someone here with another, at least one of the jobs for two years. And that would give us a data set to look at, um, and, you know, we could talk to other communities that, you know, what do you track? How do you track it? It would be different in that, you know, the size of our county and the world nature, you know, of trying to implement something like that here. Uh, but after that time period, we can look at and say, you know, because of, you know, all these, you know, benefits of this position, we were able, you know, to, to see a reduction on this side. You know, we think it's overall, you know, advantageous to continue funding that position cause it's gonna, you know, save us money and resources and all these other, uh, demands and resources that would otherwise have to be used. Uh, so that would, you know, what you'd look at in that two-year period. Um, and then at that point decide if, you know, the numbers are there and, um, there's the support for it of, you know, we're gonna fund this out of our, you know, general budget and keep the position. Or at that time decide, you know what, we don't think this is, um, you know, the right fit and we're, you know, just gonna end the program after two years.
I think it's an excellent use of ARPA funds because obviously it's come about because of COVID and COVID has, you think about the isolation that happened when we were shut down for however long and just, people went crazy, I mean, you think about your normal, every single day, what you were doing and now you're told, no, you can't go work out, no, you, you can't go and do these things that you're nor, you're used to doing. You're relying on other people while people, not everybody has friends and relatives and close, people close to them to even just talk to.
Right.
So this is.
They still have them support systems.
This is something that could be incredible for our community because you're just, you may just be a phone call that just keeps them, just talking to somebody and just lets them know that they're somebody and not just a.
And then they're not alone.
A nobody, yeah, exactly.
Mental health, um, you know, prices increased, ex potentially during COVID, as did domestic violence. And those, you know, that's all in, uh, isolation, that's what happens, there's no reaching out. And it can, you know, it happens, so those are the, you know, those are the kinds of situations where we want to have that huge bridge and open door and, yeah.
A couple other considerations, so they had talked with the, you know, the county about this position. I think the county asked you about the city putting in funds. Um, the way ARPA funds are allocated in non-entitlement cities and communities like the county in Algonah is based on a per capita basis, so, you know, this county's ARPA allocation, you know, Algonah's population is counted in that. Um, so I think it makes sense to first look at the county, um, for funding this position. Um, but, you know, if as a city, if, if, um, depending where the county comes in and add, if that's something that we wanna, you know, do a joint partnership on funding, um, I don't really see us as a, a fifty-fifty again because we're already counted in, in their allocation. But, you know, if they're based in Algonah, you know, would we be allowing sheriff's support? Um, you know, another thing, uh, you know, the factor there is, you know, we have a right now is, you know, to be housed in Algonah PD because we have a volunteer program here, um, you know, that could be based off of. But, you know, the idea would be that it would be a joint position where, you know, it would be someone that would serve the, could serve the entire county. So, you know, it might make sense to have it be a county person, but, um, you know, so, so there are some things that we need, need to flush out. Um, you're supposed to meet with the board, the supervisors on the ninth. Um, I think, you know, one question, um, I think that, you know, would be good from the city's perspective is, you know, what timeline and, you know, what direction or commitment are you, are you looking from us?
Yeah, because when I, uh, when I presented it to the county, they wanted to, uh, the first question they asked is, you know, had I talked to the city? And that's when I said, I've started this before, or we had started this before and knew that those funds were available for the city. So, and they said we wanted to look at it, so that's when, um, that's where I said we have some changes to make in this and some considerations.
So this hundred and forty is like the whole thing, not just what you're thinking for the city's portion?
A hundred and forty would be two years for, it's a salary, right.
The two salaries, so.
They put in the benefits on that as a, just a whole thing.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, putting that, so, I mean, you're, if the county knows that the city, cause I'm, like Brad said, I'm, I, I think it's a great use of COVID funds, but obviously if we're funding the whole thing, it's gonna be, in my mind, it's gonna stay in the city.
Absolutely.
It's not going into the county. If we decide it's that important and we're, we're funding it. But if we, if we can do a two-year joint and then figure out what is the best way to fund this and how do we run this, then that's great, even better, yeah. But, I mean, I think.
I think it's, I think it's basically, we would say we're on board.
We're on board, you can tell it by that.
I mean, since I, we've, I've been a part of it, that's kind of how I've got that on my, our side because of, you know, I'm pretty passionate about this as well. But there again, if this is something we can have, and it has to go on their end, that it's still part of the city, I guess that is what it is, like, it's not about me or anybody else, it's about the people and getting this position, you know, is the reality of it.
Yeah, and I also think the reality of it is, you know, it's a pilot program, so, you know, it came from our discussions about how can we do this? So it wasn't, you know, including your discussion, it wasn't all flushed out. But I have a belief in it, that it will work, and I have a belief that it will grow and that we'll refine more need and we will become more sophisticated as it does grow.
Yeah, I think this will really take off.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be great, if, yeah.
Well, we've seen younger, younger schools have too, mental health, I mean, it starts young.
Yeah, and it's, uh, you know, it's just like cancer. It doesn't, it doesn't hold anything.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You betcha, yep, thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number twenty-one, then do we have, uh, any more street project planning discussion?
Uh, yeah, on the reconstruction project, we obviously discussed, uh, streets already and, uh, during work section. Other street project that we're looking at is the, uh, parking lot, uh, downtown, uh, behind the Welcome Center on, on Call Street, Moore Street, uh, for full reconstruction. This we identified as one of our potential projects when we did our twenty-twenty eight, twenty-twenty-one eight bond series. So we'd be looking at is, I think when we just had done rough calculations a year ago, um, we were looking at probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand just for concrete work. Um, so, you know, if we go to, once we get to stormwater and things like that, those numbers will probably creep up, certainly will. But this would be the proposed, uh, parking lot to take care of, um, proposed for next year. The, obviously the other parking lot, less in rough shape, is the one behind, um, you know, Billy Joe's and Feed Mill. Um, that one certainly needs work too, but we're kind of viewing that project as potentially, we can use some of our SRF money from the wastewater project to incorporate stormwater management into that, um, just because it's such a large area. So we think it makes sense to wait on that one, um, until we're into our wastewater project so we can utilize those monies. So, any questions, comments on the proposal to tentatively pan on this for our parking lot reconstruction project?
Needs to be redone for sure.
We've got many.
Just a question, you talk about the, um, the water, uh, you know, kitty corner from this one is where the other one is that we did for water retention, um. Has anybody ever watched that as to, you know, in a high rain situation, how efficient it is? I mean, I was wondering, could we run some of this water over there?
Um, I, I doubt that, the, I, I'm sure it's sized for, for that, you know, the volume of that area. And as part of the agreement on that, we do have a maintenance plan that we're required to, to check every year to, to make sure that it's being cleaned so the water continues, uh, to, uh, seep down as it should. So, you know, if we look at tree trenches on this project, um, or, you know, possibly the underground storage, um, but certainly something to, to capture and slow down, um, that water from entering our system. Um, and ideally to doing some treatment on it, uh, through like, you know, how the tree trenches function. We'll plan on, uh, sticking with the, for now, the twenty-twenty eight plan and have the engineers start looking on this one for, for reconstruction for, for next calendar year and, um, you know, the nice thing about this is just, it's a big square blank slate, so, um, you know, they could possibly come up with a lot of different changes of, you know, could look a lot different than this, so. We'll ask them to start putting together some concepts on what that could look like and, uh, some looking at cost estimates, so, it's fine.
Okay. Anything else on that agenda item?
Um, then the, uh, Mill and Overlay Streets. So this line issue we completed approximately twenty-five blocks, I mean, you can see there are, are per-unit cost estimates. Um, this is our current working list of streets we're proposing for Mill and Overlay in twenty-twenty-two. Based off, you know, using just kind of real basic math, um, of what our per-block costs were and our actions for this year applied into the thirty blocks they've identified. Bump the, bump them up a little bit and then, uh, because a lot of these include Nebraska downtown streets that are a lot wider, so there would be a lot more, you know, milling and paving be put in. Um, at the same time, a lot of the curb's in a lot better shape, so we shouldn't have, um, as much as, um, that. So, you know, based off these thirty blocks that we have right now, we would, you know, ballpark about a one point, uh, two-five million dollar project. In our, um, twenty-twenty-eight bond plan, we had eight hundred and fifty for Mill and Overlay in twenty-twenty-one and then one point five in Mill and Overlay, um, in twenty-twenty-two, so that fits, um, in line. I do wanna bring note to just one gap that you may notice on the post-street list with Nebraska. So as we mentioned with this parking lot, we're planning to, uh, need a full reconstruction, but utilize some stormwater elements. When we did our downtown assessment, one of the things I identified, you know, is the lack of sidewalk connection here. So we think, you know, we'd like to, Thorington and Nebraska both need work, but we think it's worth holding off on those and then doing this as one large project and incorporating stormwater management for the streets, the, uh, parking lot and then pedestrian connection in there as well. Uh, and that could be something that we look at, um, either having, you know, Boltley May come up with designs for or see if that's an element that we could have, at least in concept planning, as part of the community visioning process. Uh, so that's why those streets are out, even though they admittedly need work. Uh, and then we also left out this section of Nebraska street, um, again, as part of evaluating how we do pedestrian connection here. We'd like to look at what we could do on this block in Nebraska to make it more conducive for pedestrian events. Cause, you know, with Dodge, this is really where a lot of our city events take place. Um, and if we Mill and Overlay, you know, other than seal coat and basic maintenance, we're hopefully not touching that street for fifteen, twenty years. So, uh, again, it could be another visioning project, we think it's worth holding off on those, uh, and doing some planning. You know, it could maybe be, you know, widening that sidewalk, you know, from a, I think it's a six-foot now to, you know, maybe it's a twelve or sixteen-foot more of a pavilion-type space. Um, or doing bump outs or roll over curbs so it can flex back and forth between a road and that's more, uh, with more functionality. So those are the, the reason why those gaps are, but other than that, um, the green streets here are what we had proposed for, for Mill and Overlay in our current plan. Um, with the two pink, uh, those are alleys. We haven't done alleys in a long, long time, um, you know, and they need plenty of work across the city. But we gotta start somewhere. So I guess with, with that, I'll, I'll open up for general discussion and comments.
I think overall, it looks like a pretty good thought, I mean, at this point, uh, seems like we're gonna be within the budget and cover a lot of the streets that we need to and.
And I think it's good that we paused doing anything on those two blocks in Nebraska right now. It feels like we've done a lot in that area right now. Obviously, we want it to be a good usable area, but might be overkill on residents, like, why are you working on that again? Why aren't you working on our neighborhood streets, so?
Well, if it can be part of that visioning project too, then let's, let's have that input and. Well, if we can be part of that visioning project, too, then let's, let's have that input and do, yeah.
And how long is the, the library, the Carnegie library going to be done? Or how long until that project's done, too? Because that'd be something good to be avoiding, or that's also good to be avoiding.
Doing more work right now, but we never know, I don't know what the plan is.
Moving deadlines, best I know.
Yeah, I think the Carnegie, because it's being done by a private organization, it kind of goes as the funds come in. And fundraising is probably something that needs to be focused on a little more to, in order to have that able to get done quicker.
Any other thoughts on the streets and?
So we'll keep this as a working list, and, you know, probably be, you know, still revised, but at least this will be something that we can give the engineers to start evaluating as well as we'll run by AMU. There might be some streets that, you know, hey, we've got to do underground work there, so don't mill and oversit it right now, you know, this next year. And so as we, yeah, continue to refine that, we'll, we'll bring it back to a now once again the budgets.
Okay, thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-two, and this is a closed session for the city administrator's performance evaluation. Jacob requested a closed section, a closed session in accordance with Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five. So we need to.
One point I.
Okay.
Give all the numbers there, Mayor.
Twenty, twenty-one point five, one dot I?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, perfect, okay. So I, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All, no, vote please, Dan.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Joey.
Yes.
Arlen.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into closed session. Thank you very much.